Go ahead and get started tonight. We will start with the Human Development and Criminal Justice Committee Chairman.
Mr. President, Mr. John Murphy, the auditor is going to speak on each of these before the petitioner. So bill number one sixty seven twenty three A transfer of two million four hundred thousand five hundred and eighty eight dollars to home center.
Thank you. The reason I wanted to speak is they all relate to the same thing. And so we have an audit from the Indiana Department of Corrections and we received a recommendation at the end of September. They have alternating funds. What we've been doing is we've been using the object cover in the chart of accounts. You remember looking at some of those budget in the end of the budget book and they're kind of wacky with the numbers. But we wanted us to set up separate funds for every off year. So one year you've recorded in this fund number. Next year you recorded in this fund number so that they keep the grants separate from year to year. And if there's any residual on the fund balance, you'd have to pay it back. So that's how they that's how they recommend we do it. So these three relate to setting up a new fund in each of these for twenty twenty four. Reducing the budget that you approved as part of the budget and then increasing by the same amount for that. So it's not a new expenditures by any means, it's just kind of doing that. So wanted to let you know about that. And then we have two other funds that our financial system. It's the Ducomm Project Income Fund nine one two seven and the Ducomm Union Transition Program Fund nine one two six. The state has recommended we use different fund numbers for those. Our financial system is capable of doing that without any any issue. So the question to you is, can you go ahead and do that in twenty twenty four? Or would you like to bring us something formal, reducing the old fund, increasing the new fund? Either way, it's acceptable to me. They're not really controlled by the state as far as the fund, but if you have thoughts on that, let me know. We'd be happy to do it more formally if that's what you'd like. We'll call the count on.
So so more formally like we're doing tonight?
Right, right.
If you're gonna do it, it should be consistent, gentlemen. There's a lot of money into the government.
One thing to add here is that to yeah, to point back to what you were saying is that IDOC is requiring two funds for these grants. So one year is going to be on an even year or one fund is going to be on an even years. And then the other fund number will be for odd years. So the reason why we brought this to you is because we have to set up a new fund. Now, this other one for the project income, it's just a fund change, a fund number change. It's not setting up a new fund. It's a technicality of sorts.
So change in methodology, it's truly just a break.
Yeah, it'll actually change, it'll change the history of the funds will all be in the correct fund going back, which is kind of powerful in a way. We would note that in our course, our records and so forth, that we've changed enough. So it's nine one two seven will be number one one two two. And then nine one two six would be fund number one one two three. So either way, think about it, let Mr. President Root know and then we could progress from there. However, you'd like to do it.
Shouldn't we take it to now?
That's fine. Yeah, if you would like to do that. Which is for next year?
Okay.
It's automatic, it'll be automatic.
Since it's factating its years' records.
Did you go ahead and do?
Yeah.
Just go ahead and change it. Okay. Are you okay with that?
Yep.
Okay. Thanks.
Petitioner from Ducomm Assembly.
Usually.
What do we do?
In this case, the auditor is bringing it because of the audit. Okay, yeah, we want to change, but also because you know, we're starting a new payroll and we want to get all the payroll numbers in there properly. We want to get off to a good start with each funds. We're not posting a lot of journal entries, so.
But it's 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 more to do consent of it really coming from the audit.
It is. Yeah, okay.
It's the audit from the IDOC, not to get confused with the conversations of the county audit that we are having this week.
Right, it's the same exact numbers on both pages. It's just changing.
To me, that's different. What were you saying? There's holding any information from what you just explained?
We would prefer that it be passed because we have payroll to pay and change.
Is there a motion?
I'm making a motion.
Listen, favor. Bill number one sixty seven twenty three moves forward with a favorable recommendation. Then we've got bill number one sixty seven twenty three B, a transfer of a hundred and twenty nine thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars prosecutor, prosecutor one saying. Did you want to add anything to this?
No, I what John said covers us too. We just have to because of the audit, we have to switch and use alternate fund numbers. No change in the money.
Um, is there a motion? All of us.
I.
Bill number one sixty seven twenty three B moves forward with a favorable recommendation and bill number one sixty seven twenty three C, a transfer of fifty eight thousand nine hundred and ninety eight dollars adult probation. Did the petitioner want to say anything on this one?
Jesse Carlton with adult probation. No, thank you, Mr. Murphy and Ms. Doyle for taking this up.
I'll turn on this. All those in favor? Bill number one sixty seven twenty three C moves forward with favorable recommendation. Thinking Mr. Root?
Next up is the Land Use Planning Committee Chairman.
This is President Bill number one sixty two dash twenty three, zoning unaddressed property near Twicken Drive and Delaware Road, issuing University of Notre Dame. Dula. Dula. What was Dula?
Oh.
Sorry, good German.
Hi, Area Plan Commission Director. Okay, so this is one of two rezonings for the University of Notre Dame that are on the agenda for tonight. Our two parcels that are currently zoned are single family that the university is requesting to rezone to our U University to match the abutting properties. Uh, these are woodlands. They were sold to Notre Dame around twenty nineteen. Oh, excuse me. An aerial view of the property and a view along Twickenham. And another along Twickenham. This really is administrative cleanup for the university. Uh, no improvements or projects are proposed at this time. They're just looking to bring the zoning from single family to university to match what's exist or what's abutting to the west. In looking at all of the criteria that we must give reasonable regard to, it is in line with the comprehensive plan. It is the most desirable use of the area. Uh, it will conserve property values and it represents responsible growth and development. This was heard by the Area Plan Commission just this afternoon and it came to you with a nine zero favorable recommendation. Happy to answer any questions.
The Notre Dame still on?
Representative of the petitioner is online.
Good evening. This is Angela Smith, the Dance Harnett Associates offices located sixteen forty three Commerce Drive. Uh, staff really summarized what we're looking to do here, which is some clean up to have all of the university properties zoned. Uh, U University, this is for their parcels west of Twickenham. I'd be happy to answer your questions. Otherwise, I would appreciate a favorable recommendation.
Any questions?
Yes, sir. Angela?
Yes.
Let's confirm, is this the old Reva Bishop property?
I honestly do not know who owned it previously. I do know that there was a single family home on here uh, for quite some time, which was demolished after the university acquired it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I have a question, a favorably. All of the bears say aye. Although the boat, ocean, yeah, there. Next, bill number one sixty three dash twenty three, rezoning unaddressed property near Twicken Drive and the Miss at your University of Notre Dame. Dula.
Every while, A P P Director again, this is the second of two Notre Dame rezonings uh, concerning property on the west side of Twickenham Drive. Property that is zoned our single family that the university is requesting to rezone to U University. Uh, it is part of their athletic fields. These are just some views of the property. You can see athletic fields. So, uh, a lot of yours, sorry, our the planner that took these was very ambitious. She gave you lots of alright. Uh, so, uh, this came to you from the Area Plan Commission with a nine zero favorable recommendation. Again, the university is really doing administrative cleanup and looking to rezone properties to be consistent with prop properties that are abutting it to the west uh, from our single family to U University. Happy to answer answer any additional questions.
Again, Angela Smith with Dance Harnett and Associates. Uh, thank you Abby for the summary and the very ambitious planner who wanted to walk around instead of being in the office that day with all the pictures. So, uh, this is again, just some cleanup. It's a project that comes to you following the vacation of the alleys that you saw recently where there were some paper alleys in here that were vacated. Now that that's done, this is the next step and in kind of finalizing and doing that again, there's no improvements planned and this is only the property west of Twickenham.
Any questions? Motion favorably.
Second. All of the favors say aye. Close, same tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill number one sixty four dash twenty three, special use for profit of O P F five four seven zero to the road, the Fisher.
Yeah, this is Sean Klein, Area Plan Commission staff. Uh, so the petitioner is seeking a special use uh, to allow the for mineral and material mining and hauling of sand, gravel, or other aggregate and the processing thereof. Uh, it's kind of a a pretty general special use that's permitted in the Ag District, the um, industrial districts and the C District and the R Single Family District. But what the petitioner is really interested in here is more so the processing of the aggregate. They basically want to set up a concrete batch plant on the property. Uh, they're not really actually interested in any mining or extraction or anything like that. Um, they just want to store cement aggregates and uh, water on the site and then have this portable batch plant that will mix them into concrete. And then the concrete would be trucked into industrial development in the area. Uh, this is the property uh, shown here. It's on the north side of Edison. Uh, it's between Sage and Tulip. And as I mentioned, it is zoned a agricultural. Property is viewed from Tulip. Madison. This is the site plan that was submitted. Uh, as part of the special use, it does have heightened setback standards of fifty feet. Uh, what they're showing here uh, is in well, well in excess of that. They're actually showing a hundred and sixty feet from the west property line and then two hundred plus feet from Edison Road. This is uh, what the setup would look like. This was provided by the petitioner. This is the A portable batch plant. Um, so this is what would be expected there visually. Uh, turning to the floor state law criteria to use in determining whether to grant or deny a special use. A majority of the Board of Zoning Appeals found that the proposed use wouldn't have no impact on public comfort, community moral standards, convenience, or general welfare. Uh, finding that the concrete plant would need to adhere to our local, state, and federal regulations. Uh, and we did confirm that there is no actual mining or extraction planned on the property. And I believe that the petitioner would be willing to put that into a written commitment as well. Uh, they found that the proposed use will not injure or adversely affect the use of adjacent area or the property values therein. Uh, the majority of the homes in the area are located in the old subdivision, which is about twelve hundred feet to the west on the other side of Tulip Road. Um, there are a couple of homes on the south side of Edison and then there's one over at the corner of Edison and Sage as well. Um, I do know that the petitioner is planning to have some sort of a vegetated berm to provide further screening for those. Turning to the third criteria. The board found that the proposed use would be consistent with the character of the district in which it is located and the land uses authorized therein. Uh, in the agricultural district, it's really not uncommon to have this sort of large scale equipment machinery and um, storage of massive amounts of equipment. So it's not entirely out of uh, character with the district in that sense. And once again, a majority of the board found that the uh, proposed use is compatible with the recommendations of the comprehensive plan. Uh, the comprehensive plan does not really have any specific use in mind for this property. Um, however, it is zoned agricultural. This is an available special use in agricultural. And it is in close proximity to an area that has been highlighted on the comprehensive plan for uh, industrial growth and allowing this batch concrete plant would facilitate that growth. So this did come to you with a favorable recommendation from the Area Board of Zoning Appeals. The vote on that was four to one. Um, but I want to make it clear that they made this recommendation uh, subject to a number of conditions. Um, those being uh, completion of all road improvements requested by the county engineer. Um, on that topic, the county engineer stated that the petitioner would be required to improve Edison from Sage to Smilak. Uh, that the road is currently not built to handle heavy truck traffic, so they'll need to address for that. And uh, they will need to designate truck routes and adhere to those. That is another condition that the board has requested. Uh, they also requested a berm and vegetation and a screening plan approved by staff. And they requested that only a maximum of eight cement trucks be permitted on the property at a time. Um, at the public hearing before the Board of Zoning Appeals, six residents spoke in remonstrance. Uh, their concerns were primarily truck traffic, uh, generation of dust from the the processing. Um, just the the general impact on homes in that proximity. And there were some concerns related to mining on the site, uh, which we now know is not going to uh, be an issue. So again, this did come to you from the Area Board of Zoning Appeals with a favorable recommendation subject to these conditions. Unfortunately, uh, state statute does not allow you much time to consider this special use now that you received this recommendation from the Board of Zoning Appeals. Uh, if it's, if you don't take action on it at the next public hearing, either denying or approving it, it would automatically be approved for their recommendation. So you'll want to keep this uh, moving forward and I'm happy to answer any questions I can.
And so the council could also have a special meeting before February eleventh.
If that's true as well, yes.
It's a sixty day window.
Correct.
Our February meeting, your February meeting is day sixty two because January has five Tuesdays. So barring a special meeting.
Yeah.
The overhead.
Sure.
Choose the room. That's the last date. And that's the drop dead date.
The drop dead.
Yes.
That's Sage over to the east, yeah.
He's asking for improvement from Tulip to Smilax, engineers.
That's correct.
Okay.
Well, they were going to go down highway.
Sage to Smilax.
Mr. Matters, my life.
Yeah, because it would access on Edison.
Can I uh, make a statement here? Mr. Matters, I have a quick question for you. So the road improvements that we require them, what do you think the cost of those road improvements would be?
Off the top of my head. I mean, it's about a mile and a quarter, mile and a half of road. You need to widen it. It'd have to be a complete pavement section that can handle the type of trucks that we're talking about. And uh, I mean, anywhere from this isn't talking, this isn't even if there is any land acquisition, anywhere from three quarters of a million to a million dollars, I would think.
As the company indicated that they're willing to do that.
I think you've had more talks with them in that regard than I have.
I I can't speak for the, aren't they here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, we've not really seen any plans or what that would entail.
What'd you say?
We have not seen any plans or what that would entail and been able to put any kind of costs. So that's kind of the closest cost estimate that we've heard to date on what that would uh, that would entail, so.
But why would we make them approve Sage from US twenty and or State Road two?
Because I
Because right now. I think I have to bring their materials into this site?
Right now, the issue is there are every road around there is a truck route.
Is it what non truck?
Non truck route, and that's for a reason. Um, so if they were to go in and out of there, I would make them go down Edison and you and Edison to Smilax and Smilax and Lars and their truck routes.
Right.
Yeah, so that's that's the route we would make them take. And then I would also require that they have a an agreement with us um, on what routes they would use. And then penalties for when they do not, if they were not using those routes.
So this is more commentary than anything else. We, I that area is kind of an agro tourism area on Sage Road with the field of ace property over there. And you're right on Terracupi, a small, small residential community. There's a church there, there's a club there. There's a little bit of residential. Talking to the west of there, right? To the east of it. On Sage.
On the east of Sage.
Yeah, yeah, which is east of that site, but it's a bit of a concern that we're we're considering
that kind of maybe that use in the area of
Petitioners here, you want to ask any questions?
Have you looked at any other locations?
Yeah, we certainly have, but in several other locations, we initially wanted to be within the I E C overlay. But early on found out that due to the zoning regulation changes that a concrete bash plane is not allowed within the overlay. So we started looking at surrounding areas, trying to find something that would be minimally impacted to the surrounding property owners. Think Sean mentioned, there's three residences that are within a thousand feet of this proposed parcel. Um, certainly did not know until the hearing last week that the road improvements would be a requirement for us. Um, so that's something that we would have to evaluate moving forward.
So when you hear that figure, which is obviously just an estimate, what is your initial reaction?
Well, it's a lot of money, but clearly not outside of the realm of possibilities. The concern for us is obviously this road improvement is not going to be or not going to be completed before all this construction work needs to begin. So how that gets handled is is kind of what we wanted to see if there was any conversation that might be a compromise regarding that.
You're you're saying the road improvements that are required or have been discussed this day or required would take longer to construct.
Certainly.
Than your operations.
Construction, uh, concrete needs to start in April and March and April, depending on what project we're talking about.
I would have concerns with that because there's currently not enough, I mean, to try and get to it's not necessarily the concrete trucks that worry me as much as the trucks delivering the materials. But they're going to be big semi, I would assume. Right. And trying to fit two of those side by side down the road as it is now, it would not, it it becomes a safety issue to me.
Special use permitting, Abby, that is permanent?
Yes.
This is nothing, nothing temporary about this, right?
Not unless you require, you include that as part of the approval. Yes.
Is that, oh, how common is that? That's gotta be very.
It's not uncommon.
Yeah, we'll begin one round the corner from there. We had a couple years, we had to we we had a sunset clause in it. You remember that one, anybody?
Oh, was that auto repair?
Yes.
Business.
That was for a rezoning. I mean, it's not the, honestly, it's not the best practice to do that because enforcement's difficult. When you make these decisions, they are supposed to be planned.
Any other questions? So this came to us with four to one?
Yes, it's a Southern Member Board. It came to you four to one favorable with the conditions included and one that didn't make it onto the PowerPoint, but was in your after meeting letter is a prohibition on mining and extraction too.
Right, right. I heard that, but I guess it's a little concerning. And it became four to one in just hearing Mr. Matters' uh, concern, which seemed pretty doggone serious. When I hear, you know, what he's saying with his expertise and it's going to be a safety issue, that's just concerning to me. Yeah. Given the issues that we're discussing about the road, the other locations that you're looking at, you have similar issues in those locations?
Really, most of the property surrounding the overlay has these similar types of roads. So unless there's something that immediately borders Smilax, it's outside the overlay. It's really the only option.
State Road two or US twenty. Um, Sky, on those locations, I mean, the road situation, would it be similar to what you'd, what you'd demand here?
There would be other, I mean, it's something I I've talked to the petitioner and that if they've got other locations, please come in and let's talk about it before they uh, go those routes and we can see, because there may be some roads that we might be able to work with them on. If if there are other, if there are other areas where it makes sense to do improvements based on the projects we have going on, then it might be something that we're willing, willing to talk with them on and maybe even participate. But you know, talking with uh, Bill and others, it we just currently don't have a plan for any improvements out that way. So it would make sense for us to participate out that way. It's not going to benefit you know, Rob and that, if you see what I'm saying. But I I've mentioned that come out that they could add other properties, we could talk and see. I I'm not, I'm not against looking at other options and maybe if if there's agreement and it makes sense removing some of those no truck routes to, if it makes sense. Um, but I mean, right now, what we're hoping traffic will do is they'll go two, they'll go twenty, they'll go Smilax and Laris. And that's what those are the roads are made for. They're made for trucks. And so I I mean, there's a, there's a reason for that.
So just the uh, supply of the projects that are out there, Smith is, Smith ready makes is already out there. But I mean, we we feel that that's just not going to be able to handle the amount of volume of concrete out there. And so it's just been kind of a little bit restrictive, you know, if we can't go within the I C, we're trying to find something that you know, we're not pushing out into the to the agricultural community, but it's kind of difficult. You just can't call anybody, they just say, yes, we'll sell to you, you know, I mean, it's not that easy. But you, the supply that needs to happen out there, there needs to be another plan. Be able to sup- supply those two big projects. Smith can't handle that. And we can't, you know, reasonably deliver from our South Bend location. We have twenty, a little over twenty trucks there. But just to turn around for, we're already getting schedules on some of the concrete pours that are going to happen. It'll take us eighteen trucks over five to seven hours just to supply out of South Bend. South Bend, the city of South Bend is going to be very busy. We already have work lined up. A lot of our resources are in taking up. We don't, you know, we just don't feel we can deliver it all from our South Bend plant.
From the Binix, from the Binix.
Yeah. Yeah. Even if ourselves and Ozenga, who's also established in South Bend, if we both were to deliver to these projects, there would still be a significant shortfall of concrete that needs to be delivered out there. So based on the current capacities, both of us.
I have two questions. So it's or you want to be there forever?
For the plant that we would be moving in there is a portable plant. It's considered a temporary plant, but certainly we feel that there's years worth of development that's going to happen out there. So when that would end, I I don't have a crystal ball at this point, but I can see, I can see it being a longer term, you know, than a one or two year type of deal.
Wasn't that picture your County Ward seventeen plan?
Uh, that picture was actually set up in Plymouth off of US thirty mark. So that's been taken down and that plan is actually sitting in our South Bend yard right now.
The other question I had is Sky, if they did all those, if they did invest in all those roads and fix them up, are you okay with it then? Or you still not okay?
Conditions I would have, I mean, because then the roads, then the concerns that I have would be addressed.
But it's not impossible.
So the only way that timeline is proven. There's about two hundred fifty thousand yards of concrete that are going to need to be delivered in about a twelve to eighteen month timeframe, which is just unfeasible unless there's another plant that is in the area. Unless there's another plant that is in the area and potentially two more plants, honestly. That's the kind of scope that.
So this, the property that petition, you know, that'd be a, a longer term. Long, long-term investment. We would have to, along with that land, if, if we need to, to improve the roads. Which is a legitimate concern. Then we would have to land, plant on either one of these two projects. The one project has already told us no, that we can't land on their property with the nice. Which would be allowed, um, but we.
Yeah, so just to clarify, because the question was brought up. As a permanent use, not permitted, but under the zoning ordinance, we feel comfortable that a temporary batch plant associated specifically for construction on the site where it's located would be allowed as a temporary use. So just to clarify, um, use not permitted as like a permanent standalone use within the I E C overlay. But uh, when related to destruction as a temporary use.
The G N Stellantis has already told us affirm no, Amazon initially said no, and I think they are reconsidering that. Just based on some of these conversations we've been having. That could be a potential story.
Well, I guess I just have a question for you, Abby, so since this, this is not a lot of I E C overlay. So what was the reasoning behind that? Well, I just trying to get my.
At the end of the day, it still comes down to the property owner's willingness to have that operation on their property, even if it is a lot of them are tempted.
But I, I, my question is about the overlay and why it was, the decision was made to exclude it.
When we allowed Smith ready mix prior to the I E C overlay. Why was their decision made, like? Do we know what the rationale behind not allowing that as a permitted use?
So you remember all of the heavy industrial uses that we just terminated that were added as prohibited uses? We generally looked at what uses would have typically required a special use under the industrial district and prohibited them. Especially those that would have significant outdoor operations like this. Because really, we're looking for that employment center, industrial. An industrial park of a certain aesthetic and a mix of uses. This was not ultimately included in the list of permitted uses for the I E C.
Good question, better answer.
Any other question?
You know, we want to help, but I think the residents haven't had enough time, that's my uh, concern. I, I just, this isn't, I haven't had enough time to look at it, because it's kind of like on top of us, we got the holidays. Then January ninth comes the public hearing. And um, I don't think we can get a lot done communicating with the community of what's happening, because a lot of people don't know what's going on out there. And that's a big concern of mine. I know it is, I know it is, it's also. But I think we need to communicate with those most better out there. I just, I seem like I'm on a time crunch, that I just can't get enough um, communication out there. And also this is gonna happen, January ninth comes and the vote's on us, and I just don't think we're, I'm gonna be ready for that. Plus, we're, we're gonna have more questions and I'll, you're gonna look at other locations, but. I just have a lot of reservations right now, I do. And I, I sure, I, I'm sorry, I share that sentiment. And I'm, I'm very concerned about. Sounds like a pretty serious quandary to me. Because if you're saying that Sky is going to require those improvements as I, I have to premenstrual. What was your knee jerk reaction to that figure? And if I'm not mistaken, you said it's not, it's not impossible, it's a possibility, that's very general. So in the timeline of, you know, completing.
Because the cost is the biggest expense to design, to get approved, to construct those roads already. Another construction season.
That's why I say it's why you should order quandary, because, you know. That's exactly what I'm saying.
That's another two years, or a year and a half?
I'm not.
You don't even.
First enough to know how long that process takes.
Abby, what would, throwing this out there, idea. What's the timeline, would it take us about three months to amend the I E C overlay? If we were to allow maybe for a certain number? Of batch plants or, or allow that has committed use to amend, what, what timeline would that be?
Oh, we could put forward a text amendment potentially, or a January area plan. Then it would go, I mean, it would have to have first reading the second week of January, go to. Council Committee, January, be approved in February, if I get that right, guys. February, public hearing, but that is, that's like. That's a little bit under the gun to get something that everyone can feel comfortable with.
So I was curious what that would be. Timeline, and that, you're saying that's, that's fairly goes right. You have that amendment in here that we. If we all felt comfortable with that, and the public felt comfortable with that.
The public feeling comfortable, comfortable with that is like me poking the bulls tonight.
Parents do must be pushed out into the. Residential impact probably if you're. Feel like Larsson, I mean, those roads.
Guess just listening, though, is it sure seems like it would cost you a lot less. Maybe, maybe the price of the property would outweigh the price of the roads, or maybe it would be the same. But it seems to me like if it, if you take the time to look and see if there was property on two or twenty. Near the I E C that would fit your needs, because as we've just discussed. Building the roads is gonna put you out in a two-year season, that just seems logical.
Which, yeah, we have some other sites that we've.
Remember, they have a property right there, it's in the I E C and it's on.
I'm, I'm ready for motion. Yeah, favorable motion, there's a second. So it's unfavorable, motion is second, all of the favors that. Both, motion goes forward, unfavorable recommendation for council. Isn't it, thank you. Next, bill number one sixty-five dash point three, land vacation, petition on.
Yep, Carl, so uh. This is a vacation petition that you have all seen a few times before. Uh, it's located east of Lexington and west of Meadowview. Uh, this one was amended following comments received at the September public hearing.
Do you want the next one?
Uh, after coming through committee in October, uh, there was some confusion regarding what was being put forward to the public hearing. Uh, and the petitioner subsequently withdrew. Um, that confusion has now been cleared up. The staff's knowledge, uh, this petition satisfies both what the petitioner was looking for and the neighbor's concerns that you heard that night in September. Uh, staff does find that this meets the four uh, specific state criteria, and we do recommend approval this time. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for petition? Good. He's been here and actually inviting to the Christmas party now. Just gonna have a, if there's any question.
Should have moved favorably, second.
All is in favor, say aye. Motion goes for council favor. Last one tonight for me, bill number one sixty-six dash twenty-three, special use brought for located six two five one six. US thirty-one, petitioners Lance and Victoria Row.
Alright, so Carl again, area plan commission staff. Uh, so this property is located between old State Road nine thirty-one and the new US thirty-one highway. Uh, the petitioners are seeking a special use to allow for a seasonal RV campground uh, at this location. Here's a site uh, looking east from the main entrance. Uh, the site has one drive, one main drive uh, going through it, and the petitioners are proposing to improve it and add parking stalls for the potential RVs. Uh, there's uh, looking north on the site, you can see some of the existing screening that the petitioners will use to uh, satisfy the type one landscaping requirement along the lot lines. The drive ends uh, in the southeast of the property in a loop shown here. Uh, here is the abutting residential use uh, to the north, also owned by the petitioner. Um, earlier today, the petitioner was granted a variance to allow for the parking stalls to come within fifteen feet of that property, typically it's thirty feet. Um, but you can see he does have a fence already in place there, and there will be additional type one landscape screening along that. Uh, access to the site will be off of State Road nine thirty-one, they look north, that's the road looking, so. Uh, here is the site plan proposed for the uh, campground use. Uh, you can see that road going through with uh, parking stalls for the RV coming, RVs coming off of it. I believe it's proposed to be served by full electricity, uh, water. Um, thus, the campground will have to meet all Indiana Department of Health and Indiana Department of Environmental Management requirements for uh, water and sanitation service. Turning to your state law criteria here, uh, staff finds there will be no impact to the public health, safety or welfare. As I just mentioned, uh, the campground will follow all state requirements with regard to water and sanitation. And again, it'll have that natural type one screening from abutting lot lines. Uh, because of the site located between uh, the two major highways. The presence and, and the uh, presence of vacant land near the development, uh, the staff does not expect the use to adversely affect the use and value of the surrounding properties. Uh, also, this use would be consistent with the agricultural district, especially given the relative lack of agricultural value found on this side of nine thirty-one. Uh, most of the existing campground uses in the county are fall within the agricultural district. Um, and the usage analogous to other permitted uses in the district such as private passive parks. Finally, the use is not incompatible with a comprehensive plan. Uh, the two thousand and two land use map did designate the area directly north of this property uh, as commercial reserve. However, following that, um, the new US thirty-one highway was constructed. Um, so we would expect the commercial viability of that whole section uh, to have increased in recent years. Uh, this does come to you today with a full favorable recommendation from the area plan commission, it was heard earlier this afternoon. Uh, it was voted nine zero um, to send you favorably. Uh, they also did approve variances requested with the use that parking one I alluded to. Um, and then one person did speak in remonstrance, uh, voicing concerns of uh, potential detrimental effects from the uh, users of the, of the park. Uh, and questioning how the petitioner will ensure that nobody is living there permanently, uh, which I believe they can address for you tonight.
You, can you describe detrimental effects from the users of the park?
Um, they were just worried about waters, I guess, was the term that they used, and uh. Yeah, just lowering the, the area, like lowering, lowering the property values around it.
They're afraid it's gonna turn into a trailer park. That's not the plan.
Thank you, Carl.
Yeah, so Lance Roush is the petitioner, I'm Brian McMorro, P three companies, the uh, consulting civil and surveyor. Um, and we further answered the concern of the neighbor by talking about the security uh, gate that's gonna be there, you're not gonna be able to gain entrance to the site unless you've prepaid. Uh, the lease terms will be, you know, by the day, for the weekend, by the week. But the uh, intention is not to have any long-term residence. Back to what Carl said earlier, if we want to go to the aerial photo, Carl. One of the things we were able to look at when we were doing our survey is that this property used to be connected to the Sloma property across the highway and was a more traditional agricultural property. Once the divided highway, uh, US thirty-one was put in, it forever changed the character of that neighborhood. So we think this is a good um, use of the property. Given that change characters to have the special use for a seasonal campground uh, on this property.
One of my primary concerns is not necessarily the use, but the intensity of the use. Um, based on the number of drives, I did a rough count earlier today. Uh, we're talking maybe forty, fifty RVs or campers.
Perhaps it was thirty, it was thirty.
Okay, I, I had envisioned double use of the stalls. In either case, thirty, um, I saw at the far east edge of the property, a sanitary holding tank. Is, I, I understand that we have gray water and dumping and things of that nature, but. Is, is that simply gonna be pumped out and moved offsite?
It is, so, so, so I D M has, uh, they, they passed a law, or the state passed a law on I D M. Carries it out, holding tanks are expressly permitted for campground. We have that provision here.
Like a culture system where you'll have sanitary pipe in a few sites.
That's right.
It'll go to a culture tank.
Yes, right.
And, and size for obviously the capacity of those, because it's not, usually not just one person at a campsite, but perhaps a whole family.
Right, right.
There's guidelines, uh, I, I D M and um, state health department have both visited the site already. I was real, real proactive on that.
And, and one of the things that happens whenever you have a divided highway, oftentimes there's a drainage ditch, and sometimes those drainage ditches become waters of the US. Uh, it's in fairly close proximity to that, has that been cleared with?
Yeah, we're, we're not opposing any stormwater discharge to the highway ditches.
Sure, I'm not worried about discharge that's planned, I'm worried about village, sea beach, uh, the uh. Well, yeah, what's the deterioration of the holding tank and any precautionary measures, double wall tank, insulation, things of that nature.
Very closely monitored by the state.
So monitoring wells in the vicinity of that.
We haven't, we haven't made a formal application to them yet, we only had them out preliminarily, they didn't express any concern.
Fair enough, thank you.
Any other questions? No more questions, I have a motion.
Motion approved.
All of the favors, say aye, and both, motion passes, vote counts.
Thank you, President, seven to zero.
Thank you, next up would be uh, elder committee items. Bill number one sixty-seven twenty-three D was withdrawn today at the request of the petitioner. We'll head back to land use planning, I believe this one Randy is being held as well.
Oh, there she is.
Yeah, this one was tabled uh, by the petitioner to the January.
This one is also gonna stand committee. Alright, next up. One thing I want to make sure, Jamie, how many people were planning on attending the audit? Jamie, are we bound by open door? Not on that one, so anybody.
Your, your M D is here. Think of it as if everybody decided to show up and observe the petitioner's meeting on August day morning.
I'll double check on that.
That's online as well.
I was gonna say that strictly online.
Yes, strictly. Next up, we're gonna have a policy manual update, yeah. See, anybody from there? So just to give a little background on this, whether coming in, a committee was set up. Um, from the council, it was Randy, Diana and myself that represented the council on the committee. And so I think we've gone over this almost line by line, with flying piece home. There were a number of issues that came up where I really thought it was important for the council weigh in at this. Which way to go, and I also thought that we needed to take our time with this and have a night of discussion. Where every council member, you should have gotten it two weeks ago, had time to read it, so you can come prepared tonight, but there's some things in here that are different. And come tonight prepared to discuss questions in support, whatever. But I want everybody to have a chance to do that before we were pushed right to a final. And so there's no official action tonight, there's no vote, this is simply a chance for the nine of us to go over this. Any concerns, questions, changes, anything that you'd like to see. Would like to start, Courtney, with the two items that uh, that the council asked to be considered at all.
Yep, so kinda, what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna essentially just take notes. How you guys, whatever comes out of this meeting, how, whatever direction you guys have this to go in. Um, that way I can take it back to be adjusted for the next time that we meet. But the first thing on the agenda that uh, Mark wanted to be talked about is. Is it, there's pregnancy benefits and there is employee referral. Those are the two items, so. Any particular order you want to start them in?
With the pregnancy benefit.
Start with pregnancy.
Brief description.
Yep, I'm, I'm opening it up.
So there, there's no.
So there there's no requirement under the law by a pregnancy. But I I would tell you, so before Courtney got involved, uh, coming on board here with this function. This draft started a couple of years ago and I I was tasked with uh throwing in some benefits into our, how we approach our employees with the idea of what can we do to retain and and keep employees. The idea was to come up with some different types of benefits that we could consider with respect to that. So this is one of those. That's kinda the background when Andy was in the commissioner's office. And so this does provide, again, it's not, you're not required to do it. Right now, people could take leave, they got their job protected and their family medical leave. Provided they meet the other criteria, which is they've been here for more than a year. They get one hundred fifty hours prior year. Then they can have up to six weeks of unpaid time off, come back. The paid pregnancy uh is a benefit that provides some compensation uh or a benefit payment, uh depending on years of service. Which goes up to four hundred dollars per week for up to six weeks if you've been here. So that that would be a twenty-four hundred dollar. Uh, in a year. And it's down from there based on your service.
So that's symptoms to stipend. Not not getting the regular way to pay.
No, that's just an additional, it's a traditional benefit or stipend. Well, so they don't, they don't get, they don't get paid time off unless they have some accrued vacation or some other, but they may not have six weeks of or twelve weeks of accrued vacation time rather than paid time off. So.
Why, why the very first sentence doesn't say May? Any pregnancy disability benefits may be available. Why is it May? Well, that's kinda crazy.
Let's not worry about that.
They use bullshit, okay.
Why is it, why do you, how, is it just um typical to call it disability if you're having?
No, I'm, again, this is just a rough.
That was so strange. It's like, was I injured in my birth? And that's why I heard this.
Question is, are, do you favor a pregnancy leave benefit?
Don't, you don't have anything right now where people get paid for having a baby. Like, you don't get any time paid off. I think this is a nice compromise. I think that um people who are looking to be employed here, they need something to make our um jobs attractive and women, women will see this. It'll be a pro woman, pro family type of thing.
Why will Courtney not get it?
I'm not gonna have any more babies, I don't think.
Your point is well taken, bud.
And and we would say to, you know what may mean, that same you know, base requirement is twelve months of continuous service, but then there's a roll point for those to receive compensate for less than one year of continuing service. So, those are, I I think we all agree that the spirit of this is correct, but there's there are technical corrections that are.
But that's why there's a rough draft. Uh, and uh, and that's why it hasn't been finalized because benefits under Title V of the Indiana Code is something that the fiscal body has control over, which is you guys, so.
Well, the health care I brought up last a couple of years ago, they wanted to give three months full paid maternity leave, which I thought was way overboard. That's not what a lot of people even. Like Notre Dame doesn't do that for for their employees. Aggressive, right, um, but this, I still think this is a nice, a nice benefit and it's a compromise.
Long as, long as everybody gets it even.
My question, how would you pay for this? But that's why I talked with our auditor and deputy auditor today. How you gonna pay for, how would this go into our budget? How do you figure this out?
I, I, that's just a question. How, how are you gonna figure it out?
Like in a cruise, it gets spit down and.
Abby, is there a way to do a line or how would, how would you suggest, if we do this, how would you suggest we cover the budget?
Vision that like Brian, it's for me personally, I I haven't seen all of the revisions on this. So depending on how many fiscal revisions there are to the policy. My question is going to be, is it suitable, are all these fiscal changes suitable for twenty twenty-four or twenty twenty-five?
Well, and 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 I think to follow up on the question, what we do is check with our uh healthcare advisor consultant. See what our experience is on pregnancies, three, four years in a row. Do a, do a like a little maniacuarial study and that'll give us, hey, we expect you to have seven pregnancies next year based on this. That's, that's how.
Works at the county. Back your men, worst case scenario, and that's your, that's your worst case.
Those numbers fluctuate, so you, you go like fifty percent of the employees and at any point in time, fifty percent of that, fifty percent could.
I like, I like the idea of if you got to. The way you do it is you're doing a little actuarial study based on. That's the best way to do it. Thank you.
I, I see this as kind of being the camel's nose under the tent, right? So we're starting with pregnant. And then we have dads, my who said, oh, I've got, I've got responsibilities. I would like two years, I I'd like compensated. We have people who adopt children. A woman who adopts children who works here says, you know, I've got responsibilities, especially if that child's a baby. I just wonder if we're opening ourselves up to eventually having multiple pages of paid blank benefits that reflect this, except it's other situations.
I may not fit in with the rest of the world, but pregnancy is something that only one.
No, I'm not saying, obviously, but for the idea of pregnancy is you're having a child. A father also.
Tell you what, there's a huge difference between a woman goes through childbirth.
Well, I'm not saying.
And someone that adopts.
I'm not saying there isn't, but you could see how someone could argue that.
Well, I'm saying it's easy to make a distinction in kind here between a woman who actually gives childbirth. And uh, someone that adopts physically, what that, what the body goes through, what is experienced in that process and why there's a value in
I'm aware.
The benefit. So I would say that I would turn it back on you to have the fortitude to say this is different.
I mean, this is clearly defined.
When you say we're afraid of, or the camel's got his nose under the tent, you're in control of that. So I would say I trust you to make a distinction between uh, someone that's pregnant and someone that adopts or the, or the, or the father or the mother-in-law, whoever else might wanna come in. If you don't trust yourself.
Well, I won't always be here.
Yeah.
I mean, Raphael will always be here, but I won't always be here.
No, but I'm saying is that, to me, that's a distinction, that's a distinction that's easy to make and and it's hold your ground on it. It's what my answer to that is. Legitimate question.
Any further questions or comment on this point?
It's an ability.
Well, something like the day where Raphael used to do this, we're gonna all pull out our thumbs. And uh, gonna do a thumb. Thumb duck for this, all, everybody put the thumbs up. Eight in favor, any opposed, thumbs down?
Sideways on this one. Just not.
I think dads are entitled up in Maryland. I know where I worked before at City South End.
Yeah.
We had a lot of dads take up in LA when their wives and babies. That, that's, there are. Twelve weeks unpaid.
Yeah.
Up to twelve weeks unpaid, right? Is that correct?
Yeah, yes, yes.
All right, Pete, uh. Eight, eight of us that agree to keep it in there.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll clean it up and I appreciate the comments on that.
I, I agree. It's a little sloppy on some of those, so.
Next one was the.
Page twenty-nine.
Referral fee, lactation benefits all okay, breaks? Are we provided a train for that?
Um.
In some places.
Yeah, uh, we're waiting on maintenance to put it all together. Been out there since July. I have followed up a few times, but the old coroner's office is supposed to be the lactation room. No, but yeah, it's, it's in the works.
Uh, so, you look at the exact numbers, but I would tell you that about in the, if you look at the top five ways that you get uh employees attracted to your business, referrals in the top five. So. Um, so this is a, again, an idea of like, how do we get people to come on, wanna come work for the county and this provides a reward.
There's been some modest success with this within uh ESAP as well. This is a example of how we've already utilized this.
And so, I know not all of you know Selena Carr. She's the HR manager for St. Joseph County. Selena's background um is actually in recruitment. And so for this particular policy, I'm gonna steal her idea that she said while we were going through this. She came from Saint Joe, Saint Joe's system. She's who, she did all, all kinds of recruiting for them. And she said it, it creates an ownership of the employee who is referring because they're gonna refer somebody that they are going to want to successfully maintain employment with the county for twelve consecutive months. Um, and so you I've seen this benefit done differently in healthcare, especially during COVID. We were passing out bonuses to people after like thirty days. So we would get somebody for thirty days and then they would leave and we were doing fifteen hundred dollar bonuses, for example. I like this because it ties people in for twelve months and it creates an ownership of, okay, I refer you. I want you to do a good job and that kind of thing. It's not a ton of money, but but I agree with Selena's thought that it also creates some ownership of people that are, that they're referring to us.
No thoughts or comments, questions on this one?
Is eligible sounds a little wishy-washy to me. Doesn't say shall. An employee is eligible to receive a monetary reward. That means that twelve months of service to fill a county employee, they're eligible for receiving a reward.
Let me tell you why the, that kind of non-committal language because HR manuals are not contracts of appointment. So, even going back to the May on the pregnancy, it's worded that way, so it's not a, you're not creating a contract, right? However, you're, you're putting forth your policy of what you're going to do, how you're gonna handle something. Uh, so that's why sometimes you see this kinda like language that looks like a little non-committal or wishy-washy. To avoid the county entering, creating a contract where there's no intent to create.
Brittany, how many positions do we have not filled in the county?
I can look how many we have currently posted. Um, or just in general, what do you think your experiences are so far getting people to fill positions?
We, we, we know we got big gaps at the county.
Yeah, it, it depends. So some of it, the jail is really hard to fill. PSAP is hard to fill, but I will say we're using a new hiring platform. And we've started to slowly roll it out to different departments and we've actually had a lot of success with ESAP lately. She's getting a lot of applicants. But Julie's like, I can hire ten and maybe three will make it.
But they already have this, they already have the referral.
They do.
But you think, but you've seen that that helps there or not?
I haven't had much experience thus far with their union and using that referral bonus. I haven't, but I know that we are getting the applicants, so their marketing strategies, cause I see them, they're all over Facebook and they're doing different types of marketing strategies themselves. It is working because I'm seeing the applicants come in, like I think yesterday she had eight brand new applicants. There is no department that gets eight brand new applicants in a day usually, but PSAP does. Um, and then the new plat, so right now we have twenty-one separate jobs that are actively posted right now, but we might have multiple positions open for each one of those jobs. Um, we've had a hundred and seventy-six applicants in the last you know, two weeks on here, and that's really good for us, but we're, we're using a completely different platform. Um, than what the county has used in the. Easy hire. Uh, twenty-four positions total is the hundred and seventy-six, but there's twenty-one posted right now. A lot better, like by leaps and bounds.
Yeah, if you're doing well.
But this is not including the chair.
Um, no, this is, um, so we have the police, um, stuff, yeah, but it's.
What if we do it just to, we can't just do it to one separate. Well, we do it to PSAP, but is that because of the union stuff?
But let me give you an example, okay? Right now there's a county engineer, uh, highway engineer posted. Um, I was talking to Sky about this earlier this week. So say we do it for PSAP. But we don't do it for the county engineer. But Sky is dying for a qualified highway engineer to apply, and I think he said it's been open since August. And so if we do it for PSAP but not highway, then there, an argument can be made that there are gonna be certain difficult positions to fill, even in other departments such as the highway engineer.
No much of questions on this one?
You want geographical concerns or want share? Third line from the bottom where it says, is still the employee?
The line from the bottom. Is still the employee of the county.
Still an employee of the county.
Still an employee.
Can you use the word? Can you put, can you define that? Keep going on that sentence.
The employee is eligible to receive a monetary award.
Is the, is the new employee or the referring employee?
The.
Maybe the referring employee.
Referring employee is eligible to receive a monetary award.
Yeah.
The award is currently.
That's it, that's all I have. I just wanna make sure that, that we know which employees get the five hundred bucks.
You know, Dan and I spoke about this just briefly, um, during your Christmas party earlier. And I think we do wanna make it clear that they, that the referring employee needs to remain an employee. Because Dan's question was, okay, I referred, let's say I referred some people. I leave the county, but then I'm calling the auditor's office, cause I wanna check rope for me, you know, or whatever, how, whatever that looks like. And so if you guys are okay with it, um, in that same line, I would like to put in there, um.
So we do have a twelve month thing.
Yeah, there's.
Doesn't, doesn't your last sentence take care of that? That apartment head will be responsible for tracking and submitting this benefit to the auditor's office. I mean, so if you're not an employee, are you gonna?
I, I, you ne- you never know, you know, i- if I refer, let's say I referred five people.
Yeah.
I want my money after twelve months and. Yeah, so.
I feel better with that being in there, being clarified like that.
Yeah, yeah, I would like, I would like to add that language, um. Cause I think that, that was a good point that, that Dan brought up. So.
Any further comments or questions on this?
My own question actually relates similarly to Randy's concern earlier is, uh, it's not necessarily, how do we budget for this? And like, where, how much money? But where do the funds come from? Uh, is it, if it's hiring within that department, do the funds come out of that department's actual fiscal budget? I think that's what makes. I think that's what makes. Yeah, problem.
Kind of a budget transfer that. They can handle it.
Because if there is a vacancy, we're not paying for that position theoretically. Just wanted to make sure I was in the same mindset.
Alright, ready for the thumbs up, thumbs down draw for? All in favor of this benefit, thumbs up? This one is unanimous, so yes, put this one in there. Over the two that I, that were that we had questions about, we were through and really thought that they should come. Hopefully we've all done our homework, are there other points, other issues that you want to bring forth tonight?
Uh, page eight, non harassment, I don't see anything there about unpaid board of employees.
Hold on, page eight.
Page eight, one dash three, non harassment in the list of.
To, to, uh, people that can.
Yeah, I didn't see unpaid.
We can add that.
Are you okay with that?
That makes sense.
Um, and then on page nine, under harassment, you find. Third sentence down, unreasonably interfering. So the whole sentence harassment generally is defined in this policy as a verbal visual and physical conduct. Integrator shows hostility or aversion toward individuals. Uh, individual because of any actual or perceived. Uh, protected characteristic or has the purpose or effect of unreasonably interfering. Um, why is unreasonably there? Uh, interfering. Do we need unreasonably?
Because, because that type of harassment in the courts has an objective and a subjective. And so the unreasonable addresses the objective on harassment.
No, I'll say the same thing, Steve. Thinking the exact same thing, man.
Oh, like. That long of a tooth. Call me ahead of time and tell all the questions.
Uh, page eighteen, I think we went over everything, but okay. Um, three dash seven overtime, why is that first, why is, why is that defined apart there, like most successful companies, why do we need that?
All because by using a six hour form to help. That's the modernization language in there.
Think it's necessary, why do you need that?
It, it, we don't.
Like most counties, that, in fact, like most county government.
In fact, I did strike it under one version, stick through. I, I, I remember that one.
Okay, page twenty-three.
You know what, Dan? You should send me your list.
I'm almost done. Job postings, two, two dash fifteen, job postings.
Okay, got it.
Oh wait a minute, I answered my own question there, number two is, have been in current position for at least six months, but below you say the employer may elect to waive.
Yeah, they happen, they happen sometimes and so. Actually, I think that came out of the group with Mark and. Diana and us, that we wanted to keep, and Randy, uh, we wanted to keep the language in there that we could.
Um, page twenty-five, I wondered how well do we follow this? Employees must work their scheduled day before the holiday and their scheduled day after the holidays, we see. Page six times, none exception to this, that's in our handbook at Penn and we don't follow it.
Where's that, where's that at?
We follow it, page seventeen.
Other departments, I don't know, I have, because it comes to the department, I, I don't see everybody's payroll. But I know for my department, yeah, I followed that, not gonna call off. The day after a holiday, cause you're out partying, or, you know, the day before, unless it's scheduled.
We don't follow it, I have.
Well, we, we try to, we try to follow, we wanna follow the. Sometimes some department has to let it go and let it slide. But I think as far as the state's policy, I think you gotta have.
Alright, um, that's. First I root and go, unless I find another one or not.
Um, page sixteen, and maybe I'm not reading it right, sixteen, on, on the location. Your headings location, if it says employees will provide at their expenses, if you're dedicated area, I just think most, you know, why it would be employees.
Uh, this is for the homework.
Yeah, cause if you work from home, and so if you're working from home, we're not gonna provide.
Sorry, I.
Additions to your home. I thought it meant.
All remote work. Good, I'm good.
This isn't meant to be petty, it's just a clarifying, uh, question, um. Five dash eighteen, page fifty-six. Official statements on behalf of the county can only be made through. Okay. I think I understand the spirit of that, that all employees. Let's, let's call regular employees of the county, cause we've got elected department heads and things that are speaking on behalf of the county.
So speaking on behalf of the county is something that really should only belong to the executive.
Yeah, we already did.
There was a lot of discussion about.
Is there, is it originally purely covered?
First of all, the state employee. And he can speak for behalf of the state, but not the county. Sheriff can speak for the sheriff's department, but not.
Associate speaks for the associate department, not the county.
Like I said, clarifying, I thought that's what, yeah, yeah. This was a little tighter and we actually took quite a bit out of here, we had a lot of your concern. But at the end of the day, it is the board of commissioners that would.
I agree.
For the county at law. The county at law. Yeah, but yeah, we made sure to take out anything where other elected officials could be in violation of this, just like. Anybody else? John, did you have a question? No, I.
Is there any revision to the travel reimbursement in the policy? In the handbook here?
I, I think there, what we addressed with the sense that we were looking for a daughter's office to. Create a form because you can, you could specify what. You want to see before you approve payment of a claim for travel reimbursement.
The, the basis of what you're asking about is still in there. Through the groups, the discussion was that the auditor's office can have its own form to create whatever information that you need for state board accounts.
So as of right now, in the current policy, it's thirty-five dollars per day for meals. And then it's like forty-five cents or something for gas mileage reimbursement, is that still in there? Cause if so, we would like to discuss that.
It's not, it's not broke down like that.
So what are we reimbursing for meals and what are we reimbursing for mileage?
It's like to see some caps, I imagine.
Like you want numbers in there?
Some caps, like, so, it, I'm sorry, go ahead.
The mileage rate really should be tied to the IRS mileage rate. That goes up and down each year and that's, that's. The meal, you could, they also have, IRS also has meal. Rates as well for non. Some cities like Chicago are higher, but they have for regular cities, we should consider something like that.
So do you want those rates, do you want a reference to the IRS? Reimbursable.
It would be.
At no greater than IRS rates.
Yeah, cause we're, we're not gonna put the numbers in, cause if it's one way, then we'll have to amend.
But you don't wanna go, right, you don't wanna go greater than the IRS, then all of a sudden.
Um, but no greater than. Rates at the time of the transaction or, uh, yeah, at the, or at the time of the.
That will increase expenses a little bit, but it's not gonna be significant compared to our budget talking about.
And from the IRS, don't they also require us to. To report employees who have a take home car, that are using that take home car for personal use? I don't believe we currently do on a W two.
We've kinda gone over this several times over the years and so. Yes. Yeah. But you're, you're allowed this only way in doing like a compromised position on that, but you are supposed to. Allocate. Some income on a W two for non-lose.
Everyone. Yeah, leases exist.
Yeah.
Would that be the?
I, I do have one thing I wanna point out, really. So. I think the biggest thing we're gonna get, uh, pushed back is that this. Manual. Is suggesting that we do away with additional sick time. Vacation time. Just condense everything that keeps you. So that's kind of a big switch. So, uh, you may wanna take a look at that. To see, cause I think if we're gonna hear complaints from employees, it's gonna be about that. Our, our, our objective and our long-term goal here is. We have too much. Different type of time on the books. That's like a, a unfunded liability. Okay, and then, I mean, we took in, we did a deep, deep dive on all the employees and. To give you an example, like we have. Cop time numbers. So one employee had five hundred hours of cop. Four hundred eighty is the cap. And that's for public safety officials, two forty for non. Uh, police, so. That's something I need to give. We gotta look at, paint out some of these.
We also have to start holding those departments responsible for managing their time. Some departments do very good.
Yeah.
At that. Some departments do not.
And then, and then we've got a lot of people with high amounts of sick time. And quite a few with some unused vacation time, so. If, we've been probably a little lax across the county in, in, in some areas, on some departments, uh. Making sure people use the time that they need to use. And limiting what gets carried over to the next year. So. I, I wanted to bring that to your attention, cause this is a big issue that is. We're, we're gonna have to do some. Payouts. So there's gonna be some numbers we're gonna have to figure out. It'll all out now, it'd be about four million dollars.
Oh, wow.
I think it's more than. I think it's more than four million bucks. And there, there's no seller.
Okay, which, which.
Yeah, we enjoy the maximum, the maximum rollover and the maximum cap some here.
Yes, that stops the unfunded. Yeah.
But even seeing those. They still have to be managed.
Say, but that's, okay, that's, that's really my point, yeah, okay, why can't, why wouldn't it be incumbent upon? Us, when I say us, H R or. The department heads to make it very clear that in twenty twenty-four, the buck stops. I mean, you, you just said yourself, there's some departments that do a great job, others that won't, then that. Should not be the case anymore. And if we, I, I believe we would have. The authority to make that very clear to the department heads. Um, you know, well.
So I, I think in terms of the departments that report.
The departments that report, the commissioners, yes.
Can do that.
I can do that.
The elected department heads where some of this may happen. And is.
Sheriff, sheriff's girl who's in the time has what, five hundred hours or something?
So when it comes to budget time with those department heads, that's, that's something you need to talk about.
And that's what I'm saying, there's gotta be a way to solve that.
And so.
What I think, this is, this is how I envision this, I don't know if it's gonna work or not. But when we start coming back around to have budget discussions with you guys. I think it might be beneficial to be able to provide. Numbers. To you for that partic, like that department can come to you and say, okay, I have my budget. But that department can also be required to provide. Here is the benefit time on the books for my employees, and so you could see the numbers for that particular department and you can.
They are, you kidding me? Yeah, and, and we, we need to start. Yeah, and, and people's accrued hours. As far as our. They're gonna come to that. Existing standing policy. We have three, three hundred eighteen.
Man, it was an earned benefit.
We have three hundred eighteen employees with excessive cop time. I'm looking at personal time, uh.
This list does not include the sheriff's department.
This is not.
So we have three hundred and eighteen not in the sheriff's department, that is considered excessive.
What's, what's the definition of that?
I would say, okay, truly excessive is probably nine, three hundred eighteen though with. Fifty, fifty hours or more of cop time. Two hundred forty is the F L S A cap for non-police. Accrual of cop time. Cop time could have been earned ten years ago. It gets paid out at the current rate when they leave. So.
So we do have employees that have accrued a significant amount of time, maybe at a lower rate, they sit on it.
Right, it was to be going forward.
Yeah, what we need to do is. So.
And that's my point. That new paradigm going up. Leaders on the hook.
Now, what we gotta do is.
Blossom from the, uh, Parks Department. He made a claim that he was working the Firefly Festival in nineteen eighty-eight or something. And so he had overtime. He wanted it paid out at today's overtime rate. And we ended up having to pay him like eleven grand, now that came out of the Parks.
That actually was a good.
Less than he was.
Something like that happened, that's ludicrous. Eighty-eight. This is a management issue.
I, I would tell you that.
Well, wait, nobody's taking. They could do, they can have surveys. Benefits. Benefits can only be as far as their. Only run their office, elected has been to their office. Over the years. They generally tend to gravitation policy, obviously, because then you rely on the counties with H R's.
He making an issue, then there'd be some type of recovery. That makes sense, or am I?
Hold on, it wasn't, it's gotta be, you gotta like.
That's what I'm saying, that's exactly what.
Wanna raise any issues, counsel line? We do?
On, on, on the pay time off policy on page twenty-five? That second paragraph was. Pay time off, three, three out of three, page twenty-five.
First partial calendar year of employment, employees may accrue up to forty hours.
I think I hired in February.
If you'll, if you hire me in February, I'll probably get thirty-eight hours. Yeah, but if I hire you in June, then you're probably only gonna accrue twenty hours because you. Yep.
Then it says what?
Full-time employees accrue a hundred and sixty hours. Yeah, up to. For a year after the first partial calendar year, so your first year. But I'll say for the first year. For the first. Year. After their partial year. Then. It goes to two hundred hours, so once you hit two years, it goes to two hundred hours.
Year two becomes two hundred.
Yeah, so your first partial, you can get up to forty, your first full is a hundred and sixty, and then it's after.
You may read like any full-time employee.
I just changed that first paragraph, say during the first partial calendar year of employment, employees may accrue forty hours of paid time off. Full-time employees accrue up to a hundred and sixty hours of paid time off for the first year after the first partial calendar year. And then thereafter.
Makes you the little model of. After their partial year, which is.
Is the ro, the maximum rollover. Is down, is, goes to eighty.
Yes, we'll come for a full treaty in June. Maybe at the end, we'll have another chance to discuss it, make any changes, dependent at that point. I believe, right, with the vote in February or?
Yeah, cuz we wanna, we wanna vote February.
Get them to us, get them to court me here in the couple of days. Before they put the final draft together.